Thank you.
I'm going to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order at, I have, 6:35. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the three hundred and twenty states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fire evacuation announcement. In case the alarm should sound and we have to evacuate this chamber, there are two exits from this room. The one immediately in front of me, to your rear, go through the double doors out into the, onto the lawn outside. And the second one, to my left, to your right, go through the double doors, take an immediate left through the stairwell doors, follow it all the way down the stairs to the outside parking lot. Roll call, Kathy?
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Feely?
Here.
Mrs. Suzak?
Here.
Mr. Serrard?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mrs. Rancourt?
Here.
Chairman Neville?
Here.
Item number five, the 2013-14 budget discussion. My understanding is we're here to talk about the kindergarten goal. And Dr. Schuman, I'll turn it over to you to get us started.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we are here to do that. At your seat, you have a budget meeting calendar, which is also posted on our website, and it shows the next several meetings and the topics that will be presented for your consideration regarding the budget. As I told the chairman earlier, there's a couple of locations to be determined because the council chambers are in use, so you have that. And also, as part of the budget discussion and your thoughts, some of the members have asked for magnet school enrollment data, and that has also been provided for you, so you all have a copy of that. And as the chairman stated tonight, we're going to be talking about, or beginning our discussion on goal number three, the full-day kindergarten. And I'll ask Mr. Dressick to introduce the topic and our presenters.
Thank you, Dr. Schuman. As the board knows, this is a very important topic that the board needs to consider. And we thought it was very important to present the board the reasons why the need for full-day kindergarten in all of our elementary schools is there. So we're actually going to present, you're going to hear two presentations from us. One that you're going to hear this evening, and another one on next Tuesday, as you see on the budget calendar that Dr. Schuman presented. Tonight, we're going to call on our resident experts, and in a moment, I'm going to introduce Mr. McKernan and our four primary school principals to really take us through, help give the board a presentation on why the need, from an academic standpoint, for full-day kindergarten is so vital at this point in time. And again, the basis for why Dr. Schuman included full-day kindergarten implementation in his budget. Next Tuesday night, I'll then present to the board the plan and the proposal on how we hope to get there when it comes to logistically including budgetary figures and enrollment figures and things along those, that nature. But at this point, we wanted to at least start the presentation with explaining to the board why it was so important, why we all felt it was so very important to include it as part of the budget. So at this point, I'm going to actually turn the microphone over to Mrs. McKernan and our chief academic officer, and at some point very soon, she's going to introduce our resident experts on this topic, and they're going to give you some information as to why we felt this was something that was imperative to bring to the board level. So at this point, I'd like to call Ms. McKernan to begin the academic portion of the proposal.
To make the choreography easy, I would like all the principals to come up at this point, so we don't move around for you. And I'll sit from, I'll sit on this side. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you for having us here tonight. We're actually quite pleased that you are so interested in finding out the real details about the need for full-day kindergarten. I'll start with our goal, one of the goals that you set out early in the year, and a very wise goal. Truly, you're thinking for, you're thinking about the education of these children, and you say, "We need to look at the opportunities we have to give them every advantage that they deserve in their educational experience." And the board, we framed the goal as to embark on this quest to identify a strategy for the implementation of full-day kindergarten programs. And our theory is, of course, that if our, that, I'm sorry, that the Enfield Public Schools affords all students with a full-day kindergarten program, then student achievement will improve, our learners will be better, will become better prepared for their academic careers. And that's a big-picture comment. What I have, I have our four K-2 principals, our primary school principals, who really know this work well. And they're going to speak in more depth about what this particular theory of action means on a day-to-day basis. So I'd like to turn it to Deb Berger and Nancy Hayes to begin.
All right. Good evening, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our passion about this. So I'm going to start with some research that is, that's been out there for a number of years. This particular quote is from the National Research Council. And the, you know, this sort of line in the sand that's been out there, according to research, where we have to have kids reading by the end of third grade, or we pretty much lose most of them, really correlates with what we know about how the brain learns. And so what we now know is that we really have a window of opportunity, when they are young, to get them reading, to get them learning about literacy, to get them engaged in language skills. And then the window sort of closes, and their brains get ready for other kinds of learning. So, you know, thus the recent emphasis at the state and federal levels with, with the real emphasis on early childhood education. And it's our responsibility, as the adults in the community, to really seize this opportunity during these early years. And investments in early childhood ultimately save us money in the long run, and we're going to talk about some of those reasons as we go through the evening. So in addition to the amazing work that the people in Kite here in Enfield are doing to support early childhood, a group of us just recently have submitted a grant proposal for a three-to-three initiative, and three-to-three means age three to grade three. And that grant will, hopefully, if we receive it, and we're hoping that we will, is going to allow us to further explore, in a collaborative way, how we can support early learning in Enfield. And all of us on that committee really fully endorse a full-day program for kindergarten. So we know that the kindergarten classrooms are the most diverse. These kiddos come to us in all different, varied levels of readiness. They've had all different kinds of experiences. Some of them speak other languages than English at home, and so on. I mean, they come to, some of us come to us reading, some of us come to us and don't know their letters. And Mrs. Bowley, they also come to us with varied levels of what we call self-regulation skills, and we're going to hear more about that from Mrs. Bowley in a few minutes, in another important aspect of early childhood education. We learned from Amy Whitbro yesterday that 64 percent of our kindergarteners currently enrolled attended some form of preschool last year. And that can vary. Some of them were home preschools, some of them, you know, were, you know, regular preschools. So all different kinds of preschool experience. And that means, obviously, that 36 percent of our kids are coming to us with no preschool. So that leads us to a further level of diversity and variance of diversity in our classrooms. So by increasing the school day for our kindergarteners from two hours and 50 minutes, which they currently have, to six hours and 25 minutes, which they would have with full-day kindergarten, obviously, the instructional time would just about double. And it would give the brains of these little ones that gift of time to assimilate what we're teaching them, and time to, like, apply that new learning and transfer those skills and concepts through follow-up activities, through review, through reflection, through active learning, and so on. And if you will remember, I came in and spoke with you earlier this year about teaching kids how to become learners. And I talked a little bit about schema theory. So these little ones are really building, their brains are building schema about their world, about what learning is, about who they are as learners, and then about, of course, all of the content and skills that we're teaching them. And that takes time in really carefully orchestrated and planned activities so that they can have the time to really encode their brains and own that learning. And that's what we're going to be talking about tonight. And then finally, you know, teaching is an external process. It's something we could watch. Learning happens internally. We can watch some outcomes, but what's happening in those little brains is happening inside. So teachers in full-day kindergarten are afforded the opportunities to have a whole lot more time to observe, to talk to kids, to assess them, and therefore really pinpoint and identify any learning needs that are coming up. And if we hit those early on and give, provide the interventions that we need, it's going to ultimately save us money and resources over time as they move through the grade levels. Okay? So now I'm going to really briefly talk about what some of the research has told us about the benefits of full-day kindergarten. First of all, the research shows us that full-day kindergarteners spend about 30 percent more time engaged in reading and literacy instruction, and about 46 percent more time on math than in half-day programs. The discrepancy there is that now in half-day kindergarten programs, much of the emphasis is on literacy, because that's where we need to place the emphasis, and affording them a full day gives us more time to work on those literacy skills, which are also extremely important. We're just, you know, putting our emphasis where we feel we need it in the half-day program right now. Low-income students are, really are those who benefit greatly by having full-day kindergarten. On average, the research shows us, they're coming to school 12 to 14 months behind their peers in pre-reading and language skills. And when you think about a five-year-old, that is one-fifth of their life. That is how much behind they are compared to the rest of the kids. That's significant. So giving them the opportunity to spend all day in school in an enriching environment that's going to be addressing their needs is really, really key. It also significantly reduces the need to retain kids in the early grade levels. They've done a study in Philadelphia of over 17,000 kids who attended full-day kindergarten, and the research on that, on that program, on those programs, found that it leads to higher academic performance in low-income children, and did reduce the need to retain these kids in first, second, and third grade. And research has shown us that that also leads to lower dropout rates in high school, because there's a real close correlation with how many kids we retain in the early grades, and the number of kids who ultimately graduate from high school. And then finally, some research that was done in New Mexico, found that an average student who attends half-day kindergarten program gains about 4.5 months of, 5.4 months of academic growth during the school year. And kids who attend full-day kindergarten programs made gains of about 16 months. So there's, you know, there's a lot of research out there, but that's just a few highlights that I wanted to share with you. And now to put this in perspective, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Hayes, who's going to share some specific learner outcomes that we have in Enfield for our kindergarteners.
Good evening. What I am going to show you are the expectations that we have for our kindergarten students, especially with the CCSS, the Common Core State Standards. And as you can see on the first slide, it talks about the additional instructional time that is needed with the Common Core State Standards. Those students need to be able to explore. They need to be able to experiment. And the application of skills on an ongoing way, also with an independence that is very important, helps them master the skills that they need.
We're not getting, the slide up here is not, I'm not sure.
Oh.
So as you can see on the slide that's in front of you, that it's bulleted about the exploration, the experimentation, and also the application of skills that are so important. In addition to that, we have the outcomes, a stronger foundation in the English Language Arts for our students here in Enfield, and that is identified by reading, writing, listening, and also speaking. When we look at the CCS standards, you will see the foundational skills. The foundational skills are skills that we are working on in just a really wonderful way here in Enfield. And if you notice, you'll see that some of these skills that are on here are familiar to you. When we talk about the concepts of print, the phonemic awareness, the word writing, the letter recognition, the letter sounds, hearing recording sounds, word recognition, and also the text. Those are things that are all very familiar to you, and we are doing those very well. That is one of the first standards for the CCSS in the area of reading. The second one is the literature. And the way that this now changes with the Common Core State Standards is they will have students not only looking at one piece of literature, but two and sometimes three. And they are going to be comparing and contrasting events that happen, characters, and they will be looking at text complexity. That is a higher-level thinking. They want to make sure that they do that independently. And there are a lot of times when they are going to be using many different sources to find similar and different things that are happening within those story elements. The other piece that is very, very important in the Common Core State Standards, and that's the informational text. They want students to make connections. We have had it where students had made their own personal connection. Now the shift is, let's make connections with the characters, let's make connections with the author, the events, the ideas, and then all of that is put together with a literature piece, and sometimes a piece through technology. They need to identify in kindergarten the main idea, the main topic, and they have to be able to recall the key details. In addition to that, they need to connect with the author and the illustrator, define each of their roles, and present the ideas from the text. They also need to, as I mentioned before, similarities and differences between two text sources in addition to information from a website. What you see right now on your slide, and it's hard to see, I know the print is very, very small, that is an example of what a kindergarten student needs to master by the end of kindergarten. This is from the Common Core State Standards. So this is an actual text that they need to master. Now on to writing. In writing, it is very different as well. We're looking at the opinion pieces, participating in shared research and writing projects. We are looking at how to then get research from the nonfiction. So we would maybe read something on frogs, and we would get facts from that. Then we would also be reading Frog and Toad, a fictional piece. And then in addition to that, we are going to be comparing and contrasting frogs and toads, maybe through something on the web. They also need to provide sources to answer their questions from the texts that they read. Now here's an example of their writing. This is what's expected of a kindergarten student from the Common Core State Standards. And as you can see, there are many sentences that are there, and this is one of the samples that we have gotten. In addition to that, I also mentioned that we have listening and speaking. So with that, they have to be able to comprehend, to collaborate. They have to make presentations with their partners. They need to read three books and refer to those. What happens is that some of these presentations will put on the iPad, and they have to be able to speak and complete sentences. The language standards, that is a little bit different, because they talk about the conventions of standard English. And if we think about, when we talk about prefixes, suffixes, and you see down there the antonyms, the shared meanings. How many meanings do you have for the word march, for the word run? They have to be familiar with all of that and understand that they are different. Now for Leeann. She is going to be sharing with us what those students need to be ready for their learning.
Good evening. I'm going to show you a quotation that was spoken by a kindergarten teacher. So remember what Deb and Nancy were talking to about all of these huge standards, and this is the reality of kindergarten. Kindergarten teacher once said that teaching five-year-olds is like trying to keep crickets in a basket. When you open the lid to put in a few more crickets, the others jump out. And that is the reality of the five and the six-year-old. We actually have some kindergarten teachers who walk on water sitting behind us. And the reality is that despite the rigor of what we really do want them to be able to achieve, we also need to be able to help them move from being those crickets jumping out of the basket to being students that are able to manage their way in a classroom. And fortunately, I think that over the past, I guess, 15 years, one of the great changes in education has been the move from education being a kind of social service to education being based on research and science. And we've learned an awful lot about the human brain, about how the human brain works, and about what very young children need. Right now, with a half-day of kindergarten, I think that up until probably December, January, our kindergarten teachers are spending an awful lot of time teaching our children just how to manage their world in a classroom. What processes do they have to follow? What procedures do they have to practice? How do they talk to one another? How do they read a book going from, you know, one page to another? What does it mean to write from left to right? All of those kinds of things. And then at the end, if you recall what Nancy was showing you, they have to be able to read a passage on brown bear, brown bear. And the trajectory of their learning is huge. We have found over time, some research that has really helped us to know the best way to help children achieve that kind of success. And you may have heard, there is something that was actually started in the, I guess, 60s and 70s that has been around for a long time, and that is the philosophy that children need to learn self-regulation and executive function. And we're kind of calling that our school readiness skills. And one way of trying to figure out how to picture that when you're looking at how a teacher is teaching and what children need, is that it's kind of like having that air traffic controller. You know, those kinds of thought processes, the kind of work that the brain needs to do, the paths that impulses and thoughts need to travel, and self-regulation is that piece of us that really is in there directing all of those different kinds of functions that happen in the brain. I think that, you know, some really important pieces to self-regulation are that it enables all of us to engage in very mindful, deliberate thinking. It's not the emotional reaction to things, but us being able to control our brain and to make very thoughtful kinds of decisions about what we're going to learn and how we're going to demonstrate what we've learned. It helps us to know how to not do something that we know we shouldn't do, and help us to do something that we really don't want to do. So those of you that have children who are willing to come home at night and do their homework, even though they don't really want to, have that piece of self-regulation pretty down pat. There are others of us that have had children, and that wasn't something that they learned easily, and so we had to practice and practice and practice with them. And it is not something that we're born knowing. Self-regulation is not something that everybody just has skills, and as we get older, it happens. Those are things that really need to be explicitly taught. In order for us to learn to read, to write, to solve problems, to engage each other in conversation, we have to have these kinds of skills. And the science is saying to us that self-regulation skills are really that biological, the biological foundation for school readiness. Without those, we aren't as ready for school. And I'm just going to, what I did is just kind of categorize some of them for you in ways that I think are very easily understood. Self-regulation helps us to stay on task. It helps us to ignore distractions. It helps us to remember things on purpose. Okay? That's our working memory. We can focus, hold, and work with information in our minds. We can hold two different things in our minds at the same time. If you think about how complicated reading is, when you think about the skills that we were talking to about, the need to be able to decode, the need to be able to recognize sight words, the need to be able to read a certain direction, the need to be able to understand, the need to be able to know inflections in your writing, think of all the different kinds of things that a child needs to hold in his or her head all at the same time. That's self-regulation. And those are the kinds of things that these magic makers behind us are teaching our children every day. Unfortunately, in a half-day kindergarten, there's not as much time to be able to do that with the kind of depth and comfort that children need. It helps, self-regulation helps us to develop self-discipline, pay attention, to be motivated to achieve, in a way that is, as I said to you, comfortable for children without undue pressure. Research has shown us that children's self-regulation behaviors in the early years, I love the statistic, predict their school achievement in reading and mathematics better than their IQ scores. So for those of us that have been in education for a long time, we know those children who were exceptionally bright, but when it came to achieving and showing success, floundered. And this is why they did. They did not have that internal self-regulation to be able to take their brains and actually demonstrate and functionally learn the kinds of things that they needed to do, to apply what they knew. Why we need to teach this in kindergarten, first of all, it doesn't just appear. Okay? It is, as I said, built over time through modeling, explicit instruction, and practice. As Deb said to you, the children come to us, there is never any other year in their schooling where we have such a diverse population in a classroom. And kids now are very, very different than we were, than children were even 10 years ago. As wonderful as technology is, we now need to help children learn to negotiate. We have to help them with conversation. We have to help them really be able to problem-solve and process things differently, because the world that they're living in is not worse, but just different than it used to be. And in order for them to be able to learn those really essential skills in first grade and second grade, to be able to read by third grade the way we want them to be able to read, we need to be able to start in kindergarten. So what would it look like in kindergarten if we were able to, with great depth, teach these kinds of things in a full-day program? First of all, teachers would have time to use part of each day to explicitly teach self-regulation. So what we're doing now is we are jumping into, and rightfully so, the reading and the math pieces of what we need children to do. As, if we were, if we had that extended time, this self-regulation piece, it would be much easier for us to make sure that everybody was able to read, do math problems, learn to their potential. We would be able to embed this self-regulation into their math and reading instruction. For example, right now, we have, as I'm sure you all know, we have calendar time for math, and the children practice reading the numbers on the calendar and the number line. And it's a, it's a very wonderful time for children and teachers to be together, usually on a rug, looking at, you know, some of the manipulatives that we have. If you think about holding two things in their, training them to hold two things in their mind at the same time, what we could do at that point is, instead of just practicing with the calendar, we could also then extend that to say to them, "Okay, now we're done with this. I'm going to change things around a little bit, and you're going to notice," remember, these are five-year-olds, "you're going to notice that I have reversed some of the numbers. And you need to find where on this calendar I've made a mistake." So two things that they have to hold in their head at the same time. One is their knowledge of the sequence of numbers, and two is to be able to notice where a mistake was made and correct it. And so they're practicing what the brain needs to be able to do, which is to hold a variety of pieces of information in your brain, and then use them at the same time. Children would have time to participate, and I think of everything, this is the thing that would matter the most to so many of us, to participate and play. I know that, you know, one of the things that research is showing us is that five, six, seven-year-olds, that is when they learn the most and when they learn best for the longest period of time, is when they're able to play in order to learn. And it's not just arbitrary play, it's intentional, deliberate, dramatic, creative play. And some of the kinds of things that children learn through that kind of play is how to take turns, how to use appropriate language, following rules, setting rules, negotiating things, understanding abstract concepts, exercising their imagination, and practicing creativity. And so, you know, I think that there's nothing that is going to be more helpful to us in terms of helping to shape the kindergarten mind and the kindergarten life than this idea of self-regulation. And I know that there's a lot of research out there, and I encourage you to look into it. And if you want, get in touch with me. We have so much to be able to share with you around that. And Bonnie is going to talk more globally now about kindergarten in general, and what does it mean for excellence in our district.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, everybody. A vision for excellence in education. Full-day kindergarten is going to be the essential foundation for an excellent education program and foundation. Should I do it again?
No.
Do you want me to do it? All right. So first of all, all of our kindergarten students must meet the same learning standards, whether they're in a full-day program or in a half-day program. If they're in a full-day program, just to review again, it's a 900-hour hours of instruction. And if it's a half-day program, it's 450 hours of instruction. So you're doubling your hours of instruction. In Enfield, in the year 2012-13, 168 of our kindergarten students had no preschool experience prior to kindergarten. In a full-day kindergarten, the benefits that we're going to look at are the benefits for students, the benefits for families, the benefits for teachers, and the benefits for our community. So we're gonna start with our students again, some of this will be recapping, but students who attend a full day of kindergarten are going to meet higher level expectations. And you saw from all of the academic and the Common Core State Standard changes, there's a very big change coming on the pike here, and the higher level of expectations is vital. They're going to have additional time to learn, they're going to be able to use digital technology and be able to embed in those speaking and listening standards that are all new in the Common Core State Standards. They're going to be developing social and emotional and behavioral skills, they're going to focus on activities with more vigor and time, they're going to be better prepared for first grade because they're going to have time to be able to master the skills that they're going to need to master in kindergarten. We're gonna, they're going to be less likely to experience grade retention, especially in grades one and two, by having the extra time. They're going to be able to produce, we're going to be able to produce those long-term gains and experience less stress for children. That one, I thought, was interesting to hear because children today need schedules, they need consistent schedules, and they need routines and transitions. And many of them have so many routines and transitions because they're going so many different places. They're more likely to succeed later in school, and they, we will have a lower dropout rate in high school. And we hope to have our children more prepared for the demands of college and career. That's our goal.
Yep. Yep, it's okay.
Okay, so the benefits for families. We're going to have enriched family time because students are going to be having more time to master those skills, so there's going to be more family time and time to relax at home. The report for more satisfaction with their child's educational experience, this was a study that was done with the National Center for Educational Statistics, and after a second year of full-day kindergarten, 100% of the full-day kindergarten parents and 72% of the half-day kindergarten parents noted that if they were given that opportunity again, they would choose full-day kindergarten. There was also another vote done in Massachusetts, and 81% of the students in Massachusetts are in full-day kindergarten. Benefits for teachers. Teachers would have more time to identify and address those student needs. This way, they're going to be able to plan more in-depth lessons to meet the student needs. By addressing those learning needs and challenges earlier, it's going to be able to meet the needs of the students and hopefully keep them right on their grade-level standards. Maximizing those resources by catching the early intervention needs of our students, we're going to be able to give them support and to give them the kinds of learning that they're going to need to make them successful with these higher standards. We're gonna allow for more inquiry-based learning and intentional play. I think that you've heard tonight about that with the new Common Core State Standards, there's a lot more inquiry-based learning and a lot of experimental learning and digital learning, so just more time for students to be able to be exposed to those different experiences. The benefits to the community. This was a statistic that the Economic Policy Institute and Committee for Economic Development quoted, $3 was saved for every dollar that was invested in education. So the saving of money in the long term, if you put your money into the early intervention and the early education, then you're not going to have to spend that money in the long term later on. The supports for working families. Today's working families have a lot of, a lot of different things in their lives, so it would give our working families in our town more support. It will provide the essential building blocks for a successful educational experience, so our community will grow. In conclusion, a vision for excellence in education, our students must be prepared to compete with the students across our country and in the global society. Full-day kindergarten programs will be excellence for education in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. I want the clipper. No. Thank you, principals. I could actually just touch this button myself, but...
Okay.
Looking around at the other districts in the area, looking at the state, looking at the national trends, including the trend in Massachusetts, which is a leader in education, it is clear that this is the path to choose. There's no doubt, this is the path to choose. There's no question from the research. Governor Malloy last year put forth four major initiatives in educational reform. His first initiative, enhance families' access to high-quality, early childhood education opportunities. That was his first initiative. The governor knows this, all experts in education know that investment early pays off later. When we look around at our districts, what's happening? Presently, we know of 76 districts in the state that have full-day kindergarten. The trend is to add full-day kindergarten. It is not to stay the same or certainly reduce that. Several districts last year added full-day kindergarten in this region, even in difficult budget times. Districts know this is the right thing to do. Many districts presently are exploring the addition of full-day kindergarten. I applaud everyone on the board who's considering this initiative because it's the right initiative. It is, it is a foundation, it is a building block for... When we think, the comment, I think it was LeAnn made, was that nowhere in education is the gap so large or the diversity so great in a classroom. You have to think of children who come with nothing, no experience at all in formal education at all, to children who may have had full-day pre-K at the same time. And the herding cats or the herding crickets?
Crickets.
I have a cricket. I have a five-year-old cricket myself, who is in full-day K, enriched full-day K. It is the right choice. It is the trend, it's the right choice, and it is, it will, in the long run, produce the results that you want to see with less retention, resources I think more effectively deployed, and less need for interventions at other grades. Certainly any types of dropout prevention, and it is hard to see that in a five-year-old who may not be able to make the progress necessary, those are the seeds of dropout. They're the seeds of a child who may not attain the third-grade reading standard, which is a crucial standard. So anything we can do at this level to provide the enrichment that children need is the right decision to make. We know the early investments produce results. And I believe that it is an effective budgetary decision to make because you will gain down the road. Unfortunately, we can't always show you the dollar-for-dollar gain, but we know when we're putting less money into intervention, less money into retention, we can allocate differently for differentiated resources because children are better prepared, that's the right decision. And finally, we haven't talked about the attractive nature of this program. Attractive nature for families. Families make decisions about where to live and where to send their children. All around us, there are pre-K programs and full-day K programs. Not every single town, but many towns. All of our magnet schools have full-day K. Many of our towns that neighbor us have full-day K. And you think about a young family making a decision to move into a town, will that be a factor? Absolutely. Is it a factor to retain those families in our schools? I know that I couldn't live in a town that didn't have a full-day K program. So I think that is one piece that didn't come out, but one we have to consider. This board has made a great move in supporting excellence in education with the decision and the support of a state-of-the-art high school focused on, among other things, science, technology in the arts, engineering in the arts. The foundation for that excellence is now, is in kindergarten. So thank you for your time, and I hope we can help you in your process and provide you the information you need to move forward.
Very good, thank you, ladies. We really appreciate it. This is certainly a topic that we're all very interested in, and I believe we're doing it in two parts. At this point, I entertain... Okay, I entertain questions from the board if they'd like to ask to our principals and our chief academic officer, any questions? We'll start with Joyce and then go to Jen.
Jen had her hand up first.
Okay, then we'll start with Jen, and we'll go to Joyce and Tina.
I just have a couple of questions. I have, one of my children was a half-day kindergartner and had to be retained and had to go through another half-day kindergarten, and I felt it was a complete waste, but he was blessed with who he had the second time around. What do you see right now for retention needed in kindergarten with the half-day program? I know you, I know that it will be better if we had a full-time, but right now, do you see a lot of children having to be retained because of the half-time kindergarten?
You know, I don't know, I think it depends on the year and the class. It's really hard, Mrs. Rancourt, to actually quantify that for you, given the different demographics of each of the school. Here's, here's what I believe, and I, you know, I think that my colleagues believe the same thing, that there will be, I think, fewer children that will need that kind of retention because they will have more time to learn how to manage school, how to be ready for school. So, you know, so a child that is immature or a child that is really struggling to be able to master some of the procedures and processes and being able to, not so much that they can't learn, but that their brains are too immature to be able to do that at that point in time, we would have all of that additional time, I mean, you know, 450 to 900, you know, there's a huge difference there, to be able to work with that child to help them, to help their brains mature, to be able to manage their world in kindergarten. I mean, and I'll speak as LeAnn, do I think that there will never be any other kindergarten retentions? No, I don't think that that's the case. But if, as I'm thinking of the children that typically we're retaining in kindergarten, I know, I know that there would be fewer of them because that full day would give them that extra time to practice, to learn those self-regulation skills, to, you know, to play, to learn the reading and math.
And I think one thing that I think we didn't mention was the English language learners. We're really having a lot more English language learners, and the language piece is so important now in our new Connecticut State Standards that it gives more time for that piece.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hayes, you have had a full-day kindergarten class in your school for several years now. I don't remember exactly how many. Three or four?
No, about eight or nine.
That long, okay. I knew they were there. Have, do you see a difference in the students who go on to first and second grade from that full day versus those who are in half-day? Because you have one of each, do you not?
I have one section of full-day K, and then I have six other sections of half-day. So with that question, I do see a difference. What I see a difference is, is that application piece, when they are taught a skill in the morning in a mini lesson, I can see them practicing that and using that in the afternoon to be able to embed that into their memory bank. The other thing that I see that's happening is there's more independence, where they're using that strategy hand, and they're able to then choose strategies to help them as they go through that complicated process in reading. So I definitely see a difference, and I also see a difference in the families because they are able to enjoy their child's experience, not only would it be AM or PM, but it's all day. So they have more opportunity to come into the building to learn what it's like in that kindergarten classroom, and we invite parents to come in a lot. So it gives them more of an opportunity to be in the building.
Thank you.
Do you have another question?
I've got more, but I'll come back.
Okay, Tina?
I have more comments than I do questions, but I'm a huge supporter of full-day kindergarten. I would love to see this in our town because I think it's exactly what we need. I'm speaking from experience, I had three children, one of which was born in October, and he ended up doing three years of preschool. And then he went to kindergarten, and I was just feeling like he was ready to be there all day to continue his learning. And we have that element that we have to remember, that there are kids starting kindergarten that are five and will recently be six, and, you know, they are definitely more than ready. I really liked the, when you guys were talking about the grade retention, that they would have that extra time in class to get some early interventions so that there would be less grade retention and more time for them to really get acclimated and not just the small time. The other thing is, is with snow days and those morning kindergarten kids, they always seem to, with the late openings. No, but, you know, I'll watch the weather and I think about, oh, you know, because then that's even less time for the kids in class and then more stress for the teachers to have to compensate for those classes that are canceled. I also think full-day kindergarten helps, and I think you guys mentioned this, it's just less transitions in a day for four, five, and six-year-olds, as far as from home or daycare to school, back to home or daycare. I definitely think it's beneficial in so, so many ways, and I'm a huge supporter of it, and I really like what you guys put together. So thank you.
Vinnie?
Thank you for coming out tonight and giving us this information. I'm hoping that a lot of people are watching tonight and understanding why we are asking for the full-day kindergarten. I was thrilled to hear Dr. Schuman recommend the full-day kindergarten in our budget. I was fortunate enough to have my oldest daughter go through a full-day kindergarten many years ago, but I won't tell you how old she is. But there was a difference. I had two other daughters, younger daughters, and they went half-day kindergartens in the public schools, and there was a difference. There's, there's no doubt about it. What I like seeing is that we're taking a proactive look at this. I've always said that. I know we're gonna be mandated to do this at a future time. I like the initiative that we're taking a proactive stance and starting to get it initiated into our school system. I think it's a great thing that we're hopefully gonna get started this year, hopefully. But, but thanks for the information tonight, I appreciate it.
It's been a very stressful day, and I probably shouldn't talk, but I'm going to. Why were kindergartens done away with when we used to have them a long time ago?
You mean full-day kindergarten?
Yeah.
Well, I know at Thomas Alcorn, we did have full-day kindergarten through the School Readiness Grant for six years, and that was a budgetary.
I'm not gonna say just Enfield, everywhere. It's, it's... It seems like in the past, we used to have full-day kindergartens, and then they were done away with to half-days.
I'm assuming that it was a budgetary decision.
I believe where they have gone away is budgetary, but overall, the trend is to add that.
I'm not talking about the trend because you ladies gave a lot of facts and figures out there, but you do know there are studies out there that say full-day kindergarten isn't for everybody, that there are some kids that will benefit from full-day kindergarten, and there are other kids that will benefit no more or no less. And when you look at statistics and studies that have been with Head Start, by the time a child reaches third grade, you can't tell which kids attended Head Start or not. So, I'm wondering, are we doing something at a very early age to make them feel good at that early age? And then, very quickly, you're not going to be able to tell which ones went there and which ones didn't go there, to whether it's Head Start or kindergarten? Any comment on that by anyone?
You know, a way to look at it is like this. I would, I know that there are some children who are going to be extraordinarily successful, whether they're in a half-day program or a full-day program. I mean, that's, we'll be honest, there, you know, there are some children. However, however, there are, there are a lot of children who will be less successful in a half-day program than in a full-day program. So, while we could say that, you know, a full-day program may not be as significant for everybody, nobody gets hurt by a full-day program. There are children that are, and we know that, hurt by the fact that they are in a half-day program.
Okay. Well, I'm not advocating hurting, hurting any kid going to school, but with the individualization that takes place in the lower grades, kindergarten, first, second grade, more so than anyplace else, when you bring these kids into kindergarten and you will make leaps and bounds with some kids, the kids who are prepared, what are you going to do? Hold them back? Or are you going to push them and have them go on to whatever they can reach, thereby keeping the same gap that's existed when they first came?
Peter, all of our classes have differentiated instruction in their classrooms, so the children are grouped and challenged according to their abilities. So, as LeAnn said, there are so many crickets in that basket. There's so many different diverse situations in kindergarten that, that's why we say our kindergarten teachers walk on water, because they're meeting the needs of so many different learners in differentiated instruction.
But when, but when you say that we're going to increase everything, and everything is going to be much better, and all the crickets are going to be in a row, you still have that gap that exists from those who did not learn to read when they came to you. And by the way, I think kindergarten teachers are the saints of the world and should be paid more than any damn college professor on earth. That's just my opinion. I could be wrong.
Peter, could I just, I just want to make one more statement. When I began in Enfield a long time ago, I was in kindergarten, 35 students in a session. And when you look at the standards, the new Common Core State standards, and the expectations for children in kindergarten today, they are phenomenal, and you've, you should come and see what's going on because the changes are incredible, and without more time, it just makes it much more difficult to meet those needs of all learners.
I'd love to see public education be extended another two years, but that's not going to happen. But, you know, when you come up in front of us and say the dropout rate's going to be lowered, I don't know where you, how you can possibly get statistics like that, or they're going to have better academic success in the later grades. I don't know how you can say that. I don't say, can see how you can say they're going to have less problems, because basically what I'm hearing is, you're saying all the problems we have in the schools are because of certain kids not being able to go to kindergarten. I'm sorry, but there's a heck of a lot who have gone to kindergarten and have academic problems or personality problems or whatever.
I would --
Go ahead.
To just mention, Mr. Genitis, that full-day K, just like any program, nothing's a panacea. This is, this is investment in early education. The statistics the ladies are citing are from studies that talk about the importance of having children be reading by third grade. One of our principals cited that students are coming, especially our disadvantaged students, economically disadvantaged students, are coming 12 to 14 months behind their peers. Those gaps can only be made up with more time, and they give the children the best chance to be reading at third grade. Third-grade reading is highly linked to, reading on level at third grade is highly linked to high school graduation rates, and that's what they're citing. And it is at the point where the teaching and the learning goes from learning how to read to reading to learn. And students who can't read to learn by third grade are at a significant disadvantage for taking texts and using that as a learning base, which is, becomes by middle school, you're reading lots of texts, as you know. You're reading textbooks, you're reading outside materials from a variety of sources, and that is a huge source of your learning. If you can't read them, you're going to fall fast, further and further behind.
Fully aware of that, but I'm telling you, by fourth grade, you can probably, with a 90% accuracy rate, say who's going to have trouble farther down the road in school and who's not going to make it and who's going to be in trouble, both academically and otherwise. I mean, those first three or four years are so, so important. I realize that. But earlier, I think all five of you basically said the same thing when I asked the question about why was kindergarten, full-day kindergarten done away with years ago? Budgetary reasons. And did I miss something, or has the economy fully recovered in this town? It's, I don't know, with the high school and a lot of these other things, we're going to need more teachers, obviously. How many teachers are going to be needed to implement a kindergarten?
Mr. Jessick will go into all of the details of the how next session.
Okay. Just to clarify then, because I know I sound rather coarse here, I'm not against full-day kindergarten. If I had my druthers in this atmosphere and everything and the economic situation that we're in right now, I wouldn't mind seeing some of the schools have full-day kindergarten for those who truly, truly need it, and then other schools possibly just having the half-day kindergarten. Now, we're not in the business of raising the kids from the cradle, and there are some parents out there, I know my wife was one of them, who wanted her kid home from kindergarten as soon as possible, for whatever reason. I would rather have kept them in school, because we had great kindergarten teachers too, in first and second. So, I just wanted on the record, it's not that I'm against it, it's just that there's a lot of other factors, and I don't think this is a no-brainer for a number of reasons. Thank you.
Tom?
You know, to, not necessarily coupled with Mr. Genitis's comments, I understand why kindergartens were cut. There was studies proving that, or at that time saying that if you had to make a budgetary cut, it was a good idea. And those studies, I think they started out in the '70s and then ended up emerging towards the '80s, said, well, at least from the homework that I've done since the issues come up, was that was what was recommended, not in the sense that this is a good idea, but if you had to cut somewhere, this is, this is the best place to cut at the time. I'm the product of full-day kindergarten, and I, Enfield has, one of the things I'm proud of by being under the Board of Education is we've always been about early intervention. That's why our classes are smaller at the early, early grades. I mean, that's always been our focus. I think because we're an early intervention town, that our performance at the, compared to other towns, state, with the tests, is so much better. But again, the budgetary issue is an issue, and I have, I personally believe that if the budgetary situation was better, we'd already have full-day kindergarten. I mean, that's how committed that Enfield is to early intervention. It has been a budgetary issue, and I think that's what's going to end up driving it in the end, so.
Mrs. Hall?
Full-day kindergarten has been on the top of our list for many, many years because I know we have even attempted to achieve it during my time on the board, and were, had to withdraw the next year for budgetary reasons. Now, to get back to something that Mr. Genitis said in terms of being prepared, there are much, there have been much discussion recently, and the Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendents, in their recommendations included closer to an ungraded school, where the students progressed from day one at their own rate, and when they've reached a certain proficiency, then they move into another area and what have you. But they're not called kindergartens, first grade, second grade. They're achieving what is expected of them in the order in which they can do it, and that's a fabulous thing, but it's going, would be very hard to convince the world that that's the way to go all at once. But now, to get back to questions. Deb, you had suggested that there was a grant proposal, and I'm not clear as to, but it was three-to-three kind of thing. What was the target of the proposal, the grant, and who will facilitate it, assuming you get it?
Yeah, we're very excited. We actually just submitted it last week. We're hoping to hear by this Friday, working with Amy Whitpro, Debbie Clement, someone from As Nuntuck, some of the, some of the daycare providers in town. And we're working to find ways to further collaborate, because Kite already has a number of initiatives, as I'm sure you're aware, that are working to support really health, you know, excuse me, health and physical well-being and social, emotional, and educational development of early, of early children. And so, we're working to develop an initiative, the program is to actually develop an initiative and a plan so that we can move forward and find ways to sort of smooth out the transition between preschool and kindergarten and really smooth out the road that our, that our little ones are traversing from age three to grade three.
So, it's above and beyond the Groustine Grant?
This is part of, it's actually funded --
It's already been approved?
It will be funded by Groustine, but it's an additional program, and they're, they're going to be choosing six to eight communities and from the, from the state, who will work with facilitators, who will help us develop a plan.
To all of you, has the first readers program created an atmosphere of interest among the students to actually perform at a higher level than they might have been?
It's a huge motivator for our kids. It is the most wonderful program to have a community celebrate such an incredibly important benchmark for our kids with reading for their first book is huge, and to know that everyone is coming together to celebrate that is a huge motivator for the kids. You wouldn't believe how many of them wear those medals every day. And they couldn't be prouder, and for them to see that we're all celebrating and see this as such an important milestone in their lives is just huge. It's such a wonderful program.
I was going to tell another story about that, but I won't. It's negative. Not about the program, but about the interpretation that some parents have given to it, and I'll tell you, off the program, several of you have mentioned digital, and we have heard often, maybe not on the board, but outside the board, commenting that kindergarteners and all those low grades don't need any computers or technology or anything, because they've just got to learn how to read. They don't need to know how to overcome the digital divide. What's your opinion on that?
Well, at the lower level, there's something called Lexia, and that is something that is a strong homeschool component. Students are practicing those phonetic skills, and they are also able to do it at home. So, we can track what kinds of things are happening at home and at school, so it's a real good, strong connection. In addition to that, there is something called Starfall. Starfall.com is a great way for students to be able to apply those skills with the phonetic element, and so that's been very beneficial to a lot of students. The other thing that is happening, and I have many teachers involved in it over at Barnard, and that are, they are looking at ways to connect the fiction and the nonfiction, so the informational text with the fiction stories, and to be able to do that where they reflect on their iPads, and I am slotted to be able to present something to you next month, and it's with the teachers at Barnard, to show you about the technology and how it's working for students at that low level.
I think that we need to remember that these kids are growing up. Technology is part of their world, and if we're not supporting effective and, you know, the effective use of this, the ability to utilize it to really enrich their lives and to help them learn, then we're missing something.
Lana, you're the one who said digital more often than anyone.
I know, and I'm so excited because we have a cart of 20 to 30 that we pass around the building, and you should see, the kids get them in their hands, and it's just the most amazing tool because there are, there's an app for everything now, and the apps are just great intervention tools. There's, you know, while the teacher is working with a small group, and another student could be practicing and reinforcing, there's sightword games, there are, we call them games, but they're learning tools. They're phenomenal, and you should come and see them. It is really amazing. And even in Jacqueline's room today, when I walked in, they were using the smart board and practicing their initial sounds and hopping around, and it's all that self-regulation. They need to be able to make those transitions and routines, and it's phenomenal.
I think we all feel that school is a good place for them to get a balanced diet.
Yes.
A little of this, right, you know, there's a, there's a place for technology, there's a place for books, there's a place for movement, there's a place for song.
Yeah. And they, you should see how easily they adapt to it. It's just amazing.
In a group setting or individually?
Individually, in a group setting with a partner, they're, it's phenomenal.
So, they do share, even though they're using an iPad or whatever technology?
And their stories, actually, we have a site that our intervention teachers are using right now with the stories and the connections with the stories. It's very, you can level, it's unbelievable.
I think Vinnie has a question, and then I think we're, I'm watching the clock, we have another agenda that we have to deal with.
Just a quick comment. I've heard a lot of pros of the full-day kindergarten, some cons, but we have to realize something right now, is that we're going to be mandated to do this full-day kindergarten. I'd like to see us take the proactive stance, like we did with our high school now, is start the full-day kindergarten. I'd like to see, get it started. We don't have to do it all at once, but just get it started in this town and get it going. I think it's a great thing, I, so.
Okay, just as a kind of a final question, I have about 20 questions, but I won't ask them, I'll save them, maybe get them to you privately. I'm concerned about the 36% that don't have preschool, okay? And I'm a bit prejudiced, I'm in favor of kindergarten. I've married to a kindergarten teacher for 42 years, and if I wasn't in favor of full-day kindergarten, I wouldn't, I'd be divorced, I'm afraid. But I also had the benefit of having all four of my kids go to full-day kindergarten, and we actually sent them to a pro教学 school for kindergarten because we believed in that and we wanted it to happen, and they've been successful both there and through the Enfield public schools. But my concern is, what do we do with those 36%? If you're talking about 10 or 12 months behind, I know that's true. And I also firmly believe at that third-grade reading level, and I think Peter and I can both attest to what happens when a youngster is several years behind by the time he gets to us, because the learning is not about learning to read, it's about learning to learn and reading to learn, and it's critical. And a youngster, whether we catch him up six months in a year, he's still behind, and that's always pained me. So, what will this do for those youngsters who are coming in, and what And what, if anything, can we do for those youngsters so they're not left out when they get here?
I just think it's important, I think Deb brought it up, to say that, you know, reading skills are really, do have a window of opportunity to hone and to refine, and this is our best opportunity, as you know, to catch kids, to catch kids up. I remember a personal, later in life, studying for the LSAT test, and being told, quite frankly, at this age, you can't improve your reading skills very much. It's all, there's windows of opportunities for such things. And these children, I know you're concerned for them, this is the best and biggest step we can make to closing that gap. Are there other steps? Absolutely. And we have to look at each one of them, the tiered instruction, how we deliver that, our best resources technologically, as well as purchased resources, resources we create ourselves. I wish this was a panacea, this would fix all the problems of education, full-day K would be the answer. It's not, but I believe it's one of the biggest key pieces, and it will be the piece that closes the gap probably most effectively and efficiently. That being said, there's still the gaps. I also know that for the children who are coming in pretty well-prepared for K, there is a lot of evening out by third grade, but that's partially because the kids who come in ahead, the children who've been behind, you do catch up. There is a narrowing of that gap by third grade, somewhat naturally in some ways. So to answer your question, I would say that we will continue to look at the most effective ways, but the most effective thing we can give our teachers is time to work with the children. The two hours and 15 minutes a day, think about how fast two hours and 15 minutes of your day is, and you know how to put your mittens on, you know how to put your coat on.
Zip your coat.
You know how to do these things efficiently. And, you know, our beautiful little children are being taught all of these procedures. I know that kindergarten, even my daughter's kindergarten teacher says, she's after even the Christmas break, you're reteaching those, all of the skills that LeAnn talked about, because they've been lost for some days, and you need the refresher. So the gift of time, the potential this has, I don't think there's anything more important we could do. I know Mr. Jessick will walk us through the half. Our work won't be done, though, and we will continue to search for additional ways.
Very good. Just one final shout-out to Representative Keiner, who's here. We're very pleased that you're here, and I'll give you kind of a question I'm going to ask you next week when you and your colleagues are here. It has to do with the kindergarten age, the age you start kindergarten, which I would guess, if I asked the kindergarten teachers, they have some comments about that. And for my time in education, it's been a chronic roadblock into getting, you know, getting that situation caught up to best practice. When you talk about 10 to 12 months behind, a year, you could have up to 11 or 12 months in a kindergartner, in two kindergartens in the same class, and developmentally, that's crazy. I mean, you're talking one-fifth of their life, that's the difference in developmentally, and somehow we have to deal with that, I think legislatively, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't think the experts disagree, I just think we're having a difficulty. So just giving you kind of a foretelling of what, one of the questions we may ask you next year, and we appreciate you being here to hear the presentation, it's critically important for where we want to go. So with that said, ladies, thank you, you did an excellent job, we really, really appreciate it. We may have you come back if we have further questions. Thank you.
You know, before we go any farther, one-fifth of their life at five years old?
Developmentally. That's a big deal.
Oh, you're just saying developmentally?
Yes. One-fifth of their life...
I thought you were having everybody check out a Logan's Run at 25.
No, 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 no. Yeah, we have need to go into executive session for reasons of discussing the, related to the superintendent's evaluation. Motion? It's going to be do that, it's going to be on the 22nd's agenda, that half of it's going to be there. Okay, that's, and that was on the form that he just handed out, Dr. Schuman just handed out there, that part two of the discussion on kindergarten is going to be on the 22nd. We're going to finish the discussion.
Did he make the motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor, by a show of hands, say aye. Very good. We're going down, which one's the Thompsonville Room?